It is 5:30 on Tuesday, August 18th. I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Winuski City Council. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Hal Colston.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is gender review. Any questions, concerns about the order of the agenda this evening? All right, next we have public comment. So this is a chance for anyone who wants to make a comment that is related to items on the agenda. I believe we do have at least one person pre-signed up for this. So I will pass it to Paul to manage. Oh, and if you're, if you're in Zoom, you can use the raise hands feature. If you are on your phone, you can press star nine to alert, uh, alert that you would like to speak.
Thanks, Mary Lot. So we have Kate Coffey is here with us. We're going to start with Kate. Kate Coffey.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, too.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
No, I can't hear you. Let's see. Sorry about that. So Mayor Lot, did you say you guys could hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you. So I've, I'm a resident of Winuski. I live on Manso Street and I've sent multiple email questions to members of this council as well as the Planning and Zoning Board and Public Works about the process by which we got to the situation at, on Manso Street with the development here on both sides of the street and also across the, across East Allen Street. And, and I talked about how I'd been to numerous meetings where I was assured by both the developer and the city that adequate parking was going to be provided. And that just really hasn't been the case. And so I've been sort of pursuing this for a while now and also came across some documents where it seems like a parking reduction strategy was allowed for a future project of the same developer at 355 Main Street where the rationale for making a parking reduction based on the developer's own calculations and, and research seems flawed. And I'm just wondering, although I've asked again numerous times explicitly for answers in writing, what do I need to do to get those answers?
Thanks, Kate. I have seen some of these emails going around and it's my understanding that staff is organizing meeting with you and other concerned residents to address these questions once and for all.
Well, I, I believe that the solutions part of, you know, coming up with, you know, what side of the street the no parking sign is and if there's a dead end that's made permanent is one thing, you know, are things that we can easily resolve on the street at this meeting. But I do want to pursue really the how we got here and get those answers in writing and get answers to why it seems like this flawed document for justifying reduced parking is, is allowed to stand in order to keep this from happening to other neighborhoods, particularly Bellevue Street as they go through this in the future.
So I believe that meeting is also the correct forum to answer those questions. So staff can give you a history of the decision in regards to the project and what that looks like moving forward. Should they raise it, sort of an issue surface there with our current process, that is something they could then bring to the council to possibly recommend changes on.
Sue, let, let me ask you again.
I don't think it's out of the question to ask for a written summary after that meeting, but I can see where it makes sense, that conversation first, before spending a lot of time trying to write out information that is likely to create additional questions.
Okay, but there will be additional questions.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Is there anything I'd like to add? I think there will be additional questions and it's going to just keep on going. So I, I would say that if you started answering, then we can keep the process going.
Well, thank you for that suggestion.
You're welcome.
I see another hand raised.
Hi, Sam. Go ahead when you're ready.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Sam Russo. I'm also a Winuski resident. Just to give you a little background, I've been a resident since 2004. I also work in Winuski. And so I have followed the city council meetings. I haven't really felt the need to comment on anything because it seems like things are going well in the city. So to get to the point that I feel like I need to comment on the parking and the car situation on Manso Street, I think is significant. I did forward a document to the city council with my comments, but I would like to take some time to go over those. There are three problems that I see that are occurring on Manso Street. One is unsafe parking. The other is limited parking. And the last thing, let me get down to my other one, is just pedestrians walking down the middle of Manso Street. I would like to echo Kate Coffey's concern around how parking space allocation is calculated. I have also, I was happy to hear that she had also brought up the document for the other city, I think it's City Lights project that's being developed where the developer stated that because only seventeen or 75% of the units had registered cars, then that must be all they need. That really is a flawed methodology and I would request that the city review that, but to go through things in a more organized fashion. My first point's unsafe parking. I did send a picture to the city to demonstrate that cars are parking over the edges of driveways. This is a traffic hazard for entering and exiting any driveway. All the driveways on Manso Street are single car driveways and are very narrow. And some are also abutting other obstacles such as utility poles. So these are clear violations of Article 4 of Chapter 15 of the city ordinances. But there's not a specification for what parking near a driveway it really means. It just says that you cannot stop or stand in front of a driveway. Instead, it just says, I mean, basically there, there's just not a definition. So if you pull out of a single wide driveway and you have two cars parked at the margins of your driveway, there's an obstruction of vision. And this is not being patrolled by Winuski Parking Enforcement. I understand that Parking Enforcement can't patrol the entire city, but I would expect that the city could order Parking Enforcement to patrol areas where there is a significant amount of parking density, such as what's occurring on Manso Street at this time. On any given night, it could be observed. You can see two to three vehicles will be parked opposite directions against traffic. And to me, the fact that that's continuing to happen night after night clearly demonstrates that nobody is looking at the area as far as Parking Enforcement. I don't really care how people park, but I know it's against the ordinance. And I would understand that if one person received a ticket for parking in the wrong direction, that would get around quite quickly that you're not supposed to do that. So I'm hoping that the city would consider updating Chapter 15 to designate spaces within a three-foot margin of the straight edge of a driveway to be a no parking zone. I would also like to see regular monitoring, monitoring of parking situations by our Parking Enforcement in areas like this where we have significant parking density. And because we've had this increase in parking density on Manso Street, I would like to talk a little bit about my concern about how these units are being allocated. And I did listen in on the Planning Commission meeting. It didn't sound like that was the appropriate place based on the conversation to, to discuss this, so I'm not quite sure where to bring this to. But the City Lofts building currently at the end of Manso Street has 25 units. There's 10 parking spaces for it. There's eight temporary parking spaces across the street that will go away eventually. Both parking lots are full every night. The street is then lined with 18 additional vehicles, which I've counted, sometimes to the intersection of Manso and La Fountain. Prior to this development, there were about 50% fewer cars parked on Manso. Whether they're residents or not is arbitrary. These could be guests. The point is that there's a significant amount of parking on the street. Manso Street has driveways on one side, very few driveways on the other. On the side of street, the street that's designated to have parking, there's nine driveways. The opposite side of the street where you're not allowed to park only has two driveways. I think it would be beneficial to consider moving the non-parking area, just basically switching the two sides of the street, which would allow for at least nine more parking spots, or excuse me, probably more like seven more parking spots, which would be helpful. I would also like to see this city instead of just rubber stamping any kind of parking, development for a parking evaluation based on specifications given by the developer that the city need, with these new developments, you know, coming in, I think the city needs to commission a study to look at actual parking pressure after these developments are made. I understand that the plans for 223 East Allen are done. The City Lofts unit is already in. I'm thinking about other neighborhoods in the city that are undergoing similar development that may have these developments empty onto a residential street as opposed to one of the main roads. I really would hope that the city would commission a study to look at the actual parking pressure after 223 East Allen Street is complete. That development slated to have 46 units with 69 parking spaces, you know, given the current 18 spaces for City Lofts, there's a need for more spaces at the new development. The City Lofts parking is most more like one car per unit, not .7 cars per unit based on observation. And the Form-based Parking Code and loading standards for 223 does not indicate that there is shared parking at that location. And there's no listing of a percentage of reserved parking that is shared. And there's no off-site options that are proposed. And perhaps I'm looking in the wrong area and I would like to know where I would look that would guarantee that there's going to be the stated shared parking for City Lofts. But that information does not appear to be available. So I would really appreciate knowing if the city has a signed agreement from the developers that these properties will share parking because apparently it does not look like that's guaranteed at this time. Finally, because of this parking issue, there's regular pedestrian traffic down Manso Street in the morning and evening during busy traffic hours. So it is now one of the busier residential streets in Winuski. Maybe not the busiest, but a very busy street. There is no sidewalk for pedestrians to walk down the street. And it is only a matter of time that a motor vehicle accident is going to occur involving a pedestrian. I'm a physician at the Community Health Centers of Burlington at the Winuski office. I have seen patients who've been in pedestrian motor vehicle accidents. It's not always because they're walking down the street, but it's a more common cause for injury. I recommend the city consider building a sidewalk. In addition, because of the 223 Manso Street or 223 East Allen Street development, the sidewalk is closed. There isn't a sidewalk or a crosswalk now across East Allen from Manso Street. However, it is not lit. There is no signal. I have to cross this every morning. Not that I'm not concerned about it, but I think about other people crossing this sidewalk and cars still are not stopping, but they do tend to stop when there is a lit signal. There is also the possibility of creating a permanent dead end on Manso Street, such as the neighboring street over that is also a dead end and having this dead end present between 20 Manso and the City Lofts lot. And that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Again, the staff organized meeting for residents will be the place to answer some of these specific concerns you have. And I'm also pleased to share that we have, I don't know exactly what stage in the process, but in the upcoming months, we are engaging in a parking management study with a consultant so that we can figure out what is the best way to address these concerns across the city that are being raised here. So there will be more information on that coming.
And when is the?
Residents have with these concerns, it's going to be able to inform that, how that study goes.
And when will be the residential meeting?
Jesse, do you have that date?
The neighbors have suggested a few days for next week and we're just awaiting confirmation from the developer so he can be there as well to answer these questions as directly as possible. We're trying to get everyone there to have open, creative conversations. So John Rousher will be back in touch with the neighborhood, hopefully tomorrow morning with that confirmation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other folks for public comment?
That is it for now.
Thanks, Paul. We will move next then to our consent agenda. We have one item for approval. This is an accounts payable warrant ending August 14, 20, and a payroll warrant ending July 26 to August 8, 20. Any questions or concerns about the warrant? All right, can I have a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant, please?
So moved.
Motion in my house, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We will move to council reports next. I will start with Mike this time.
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
I also don't have any reports at this time.
Hal?
I attended the Charter Commission meeting on Sunday and there were about 14 people who showed up. We were physically distant with masks. There was really, I thought, some, some fruitful conversation about the, the issue of all resident voting. And I thought the meeting went well as far as providing information.
Thanks, and Jim? Oh, you're on mute, Jim. Oh, I still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
So I attended the Safe, Healthy, Connected People Commission meeting on Monday of last week, not Tuesday of last week. And basically just heard an update from city staff about what's been happening within the Police and Fire Department and in community services. There was some discussion about some, about the odor from the Riverworks plant, some additional public comment on that during that meeting and, and some discussion about some specific concerns around Clifford Street and being a dead end and having some better signage. Mostly just department updates, but I think it was also the first time the commission had been together since they had the presentation from Police Department, but had some chance to reconnect and get updates from the city. So I think that was great to get the commission restarted on that.
So since our last meeting, I joined Burlington Mayor, Commissioner Levine, the Directors of AALV and the US Committee on Refugees and Immigrants to publicly formally announce the end of the Winuski Burlington outbreak. Four weeks since any cases were associated with that. Four weeks since any cases were associated with that. I think, one, just want to publicly thank those, you know, the Department of Health and our community partners and our staff who worked really hard to do the outreach and information sharing instead of testing and all of that. And we did have a sort of step back on that, which the Department of Health is is using a report of going forward to be prepared to more quickly respond on the ground in in the case of future outbreaks, which I think is really important, given the return to school that's coming up. I also attended a virtual meeting with Representative Peter Welch and other local representatives. He was gathering information on, you know, what we are experiencing here on the ground, what our needs are locally, what our resident needs are to advocate in more federal funding and programs. Doing more outreach around trying to get more municipal funding so that we are positioned to to help our residents. Unfortunately, we haven't seen any progress on that at the national level, but fingers crossed. Jesse and I had a our court regular quarterly meeting with the Superintendent and School Board President to touch base on you know, for one thing, the memorandum of understanding that we have with them, re-signing that for the year, get an update on the School Resources Officer position and the student demands that the school is working through um to see, you know, where we can play a role and collaborate there. Nothing tangible to share at the moment as they are focused on on back to school. I think in another month or two, though, we'll see forward motion from them in in those areas. We continued, I think this was since last meeting, uh meetings through the school liaisons with new American uh parents to get feedback on resident voting, on our Working Communities Challenge Grant focuses and just generally to hear their concerns and what's important there. I one big takeaway is that across the board, folks are really feeling the pain of housing being too costly in this area. I am once again reminded that that is something in, you know, there's a reason that's in our strategic vision is one of our primary focuses. Also, as we already know, we could do better on outreach on getting information out to those communities and and I think to our community in general. More details will come on that. Uh, I think in September, we'll have an update on the Working Communities Challenge Grant. The Finance Commission met and gave us some interesting feedback. Present our annual budget to our community. Um, so I'm looking forward to seeing more there. And the Planning Commission met as well, approved their annual work plan, uh continued review of zoning regulations and exploration of parking regulations. As was just mentioned, there's a lot, there's a lot there. Uh, and with the parking study that is coming up, I want to say it's in early twenty twenty-one when that work will get underway. Hoping for that body to be positioned with information that we've gathered over time to maybe make some adjustments there uh next year. Oh, and then finally, we in collaboration with the local Winuski Strong efforts, participated in a Black Lives Matter flag raising ceremony in the Rotary and have seen a lot of, there was good, good distant attendance at that event. With that, I will pass it to City Manager Jesse Baker for city updates.
So we, um, I don't have any city updates tonight in the interest of time, really want to save as much time for the main agenda items. We will be back with updates in early September.
All right, uh, moving to our regular items then. Our first item is for approval. This is fraternal order of police grievance two twenty hearing. We had this hearing in executive session at our last meeting. We need to take a public vote. I would, based on our previous discussion, I would entertain a motion to deny the employee grievance heard before the council executive session of August third, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by House, second by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstains? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, this is for potential approval, charter change recommendations, all resident voting, administrative changes and self-governance rights. Uh, we started this discussion at our last meeting. Reviewing the recommendations of our Charter Commission and are here today to either move this forward or send it back to the Charter Commission, some sort of motion along those lines. Jesse, would you like to overview what we have here?
Sure. And I think as I do that, Paul is going to bring in the Charter Commissioners who are here on the call with us as well. So in front of you tonight is the question, primary question of do, are you prepared to move forward to the voters at the November general election? Um, called as a special meeting of the city as well. A que- a question, a series of questions on charter changes. And if you are ready to do that, in what form do you want to do that? How many ballot items? What specific language, et cetera? So I was asked to put together a memo on specifically what you're being asked to do as well as uh the process if you choose to move this forward from here, um, the specific ballot items and uh the liabilities the city takes on, both legal and cost associated. So those are outlined in the attached memo. I'm happy to talk through that if that would be useful to folks. Really, it's um, the question for you is, are you prepared to move this question forward to the voters and then follow the required public hearing schedule that's required for charter changes? So Mayor, would you like me to kind of talk through that memo a little more?
Yeah, I think so. I think that would be good for public uh record here.
Sure. So uh, again, in the beginning, I have um outlined that key question of uh, does the council, is the council prepared to bring to the community ballot items to change the municipal charter? And then if so, which ones and in what order? Um, I've then detailed out the different questions that the Charter Commission has recommended to move forward to the voters. Those include specifically allowing all residents who are eighteen years of older and are you legal residents, the ability to vote in municipal elections. There is then a and to protect the voter checklist at the same level the current state voter checklist is protected at. There is then a series of administrative charter changes that the Commission recommended moving forward, and those are bulleted in your memo and we had and the Commission had detailed conversations about those. And then there's an additional uh charter change proposal allowing Winuski voters, both the council and the general voters, to adopt charter changes approved by the legislature for other municipalities without waiting for a future legislative approval. So if you decide that you are prepared to move um any of these changes forward uh for the November third election, what you will need to do tonight is vote to adopt the minutes and documents as discussed by the Winuski Charter Commission, and those are linked in your memo and linked on our website. That will reflect that you are bringing their work and their public process into your process. You will need to approve the ballot language, um, and a draft of that is actually in your inboxes now. Um, and you will need to approve the process and public hearing schedule for moving forward. Then at a, at a special meeting on September twenty-third, you will then need to vote to call for a special city meeting on November third to consider these ballot items. The language before you in um linked in your uh council agenda is a complete charter document with track changes that are being recommended. That document reflects exactly what you saw at your last meeting with one addition, and that includes adding a parenthetical about uh include, to include persons who are non-US citizens in the ability to vote locally. Um, and if you have questions about that specific change, we recommend that those questions are discussed in executive session tonight. I then talk about the legal liabilities and the cost liabilities that the that the council will be potentially taking on, taking on if this um item goes through, uh is approved by the voters as well as approved by or approved by the council as well as approved by the voters. Those are, you know, there is a possibility that the people who disagree with this action may uh bring a claim on constitutional grounds. And of course, as with all other city action, the city would uh be required to defend that action. There is also a process that we have uh started to think about and um others on this call have also started to think about, about information we can provide to our residents who are non-citizens as they come and register to vote to ensure that they understand the what they, they have the documentation they need and understand how to answer future citizenship application questions. There is some added um human cost associated with maintaining two voter registration lists and running elections with such. We believe we can do that with in-house capacity, but of course it no hours spent on one thing are hours spent not spent on another. We believe we can do it with our in-house resources. And then the next section outlines uh our recommendation on what the actual ballot in November would look like that you uh need to approve. So the Charter Commission recommended batching those questions in two or three buckets. We've outlined them in three buckets, so to include the all resident voting as one question, to include all the administrative changes as a second question, and then to include the self-governance change as a third question on the ballot. So there would be three separate ballot items about this question. And then finally, I've outlined for you the process between assuming the council moves this forward tonight between now and um certifying these charter change recommendations with approval of the voters uh with the Secretary of State after the November third election. So this includes um the public hearings that are required, the special meetings you all will have to hold in order to hold those public hearings and what staff will do to deliver those uh requirements. So that is what is outlined in the memo. I also want to call your attention to the fact that the city attorney, Bob DePalma, is here on the phone with us. If you have uh questions for him, you are welcome to ask him. Um, then we may come to a point where we recommend going into executive session to further discuss some of those items. Um, and then finally, as you can see, there are many of our Charter Commission members here on the phone with us. So that is the overview. Um, I will leave it there for now.
Thank you, Jesse. We really dig in. Quick technical question. Why would the public hearings not be able to align with our existing council meetings? Is it because of the gap between um filing with the city clerk?
So there's a very prescribed process. Um, the state statute outlines the number of days public hearings have to be that have to take place before a vote and after a warning. And so the the regular meetings don't line up with that thirty to forty day window.
Okay.
Can I ask another question about the schedule? The, it lists that September twenty-ninth, there would be a vote that we would vote on approving the charter changes. I guess I'm just a little bit confused about how that would work if by that point it would already be on the ballot, right? Because we have to submit those in a, in a couple of days. So can you clarify that, Jesse?
So Bob and I have spent a lot of time with the Secretary of State's office on this question, um, and we can try to answer it, but it is a it is a not a hole in the process, but our processes are not lining up. Because um there is interest on the council of placing this on the general election ballot and because of COVID and the fact that that general election ballot will be mailed out, there is an earlier deadline to get on that ballot, like literally physically have the words on the general election ballot. So that deadline is pushed up for the decision of what the council wants to put up, put on the ballot. Having said that, um, per state statute, to call for a special meeting of the city, which this would be, we can't vote on this at a general election. That doesn't that is not a special meeting of the city. The council has to call for a special meeting of the city and per state statute that again has to be within this thirty to forty days of that deadline or that vote. So you can't call for it until much later in the process. So basically, you're for, you're forward committing yourself to that vote. Bob, if I have said anything wrong here, feel free to jump in.
Sounded good to me, Jesse.
I would just say the way I think about it is town meeting day is like a a city meeting, but the general election isn't. And so this is a technical thing to make it, to make it like a town meeting day, kind of.
Right.
So I do want to layer in a couple of things that I have been researching on the side. One is our attorney here, um, Bob DePalma talked with ALV about, you know what? So one of the questions that I heard repeatedly from non-citizens and recent citizens, but can you assure me the impact my citizenship application in the future? And so the correct me if I, if I don't say this well, but basically the situation is that legally, um, our attorney and ALV's attorney don't believe that this is illegal, right? Like we are, states are given the ability to to have the, are given the authority for who votes municipally, not federally. We discussed this before. And we would be able to give somebody who was a non-citizen that registered to vote here our charter amendment language showing that that's allowed as sort of documentation that they could bring to their immigration attorney as they go through the citizenship application process. Um, and I believe, Hal, perfect. Your hand is up. Jump in.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I uh reached out to uh Tacoma Park, Maryland. Actually had conversation with them in in this uh current legislative session when we were considering a charter change similar to ours for uh all resident non-citizen voting. And uh, so I was able to talk to the city manager and I heard from their city clerk that for the past eighteen years that they've been practicing this uh, this, this, this process, they've done exactly what what the mayor suggested. And and it has not had a negative impact on any applications for citizenship for the last eighteen years. So it's it's specific for local elections only. And and they provide, you know, confirmation of paperwork of that 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 confirms that. And there have been no issues. So it's not an issue.
I think the one thing to add is we would be telling them like, you get counsel from your immigration attorney. We don't, we don't give that to you, but we have this documentation. But it's sort of leading up to them. Bob.
So I just want to amplify a bit of what Hal just said. Uh, what he said is absolutely correct that there are a couple of municipalities that do conduct these elections that do not impair the citizenship applications of non-citizens. However, I do want to point out the sensitivity of this and the importance of doing it absolutely correctly. There is a federal statute that makes a, makes it a crime for what is described as an alien to vote in any election which is held in whole or in part for federal offices, president, vice president, uh senator, uh House of Representatives member, unless three conditions are met. And those conditions are that the election has to partly be held for some other purpose. And those conditions are that the election has to partly be held for some other purpose, number one. Number two, the quote aliens are authorized to vote for such other purpose under a state constitution or statute or a local ordinance. And three, the voting for such purpose is conducted independently of voting for the federal office. So in order to satisfy those requirements, you need to be very careful about how the election is structured. And you need to make sure that, that you're clear as to the authorization you have under controlling statutes or ordinances. So again, Hal is correct that if you meet those requirements, non-citizens can vote in elections, local elections, without impairing their path to citizenship. But you want to be careful about doing it right.
Thank you.
So, so perhaps just to state the obvious, if this were currently in place, we couldn't put a charter change on the general election ballot. That's what Bob is trying to point out, that we would need to be more careful and attentive in the future about those provisions.
Yeah, so what, what the, that third requirement that I mentioned, conducted independently means, will require some interpretation, but I do think it probably means that the matters on which non-citizens will vote will have to be stated on a physically separate ballot from the ballot that is provided for federal elections.
Um, a couple of other points to emphasize that are included in this memo. As we discussed at the last meeting, the way our charter is allowing non-citizens to vote also allows them to run for a local office like city counselor. The voter checklist protection, adding that language to our local checklist does mean that somebody, when somebody requests the checklist, they have to sign an affidavit that they will not use it for commercial or, I forget what the other line was, purposes, as is currently the case for state checklists. So currently, we don't have that process, that would be a new thing. I did want to revisit the change to, so I brought this up at our last meeting about allowing a city, city counselor to run for mayor without vacating their seat. I don't think anyone else had like strong feelings about this last time, but the more I have thought about it, I don't really want to make that change to our current process. I think the current state of having to do a short-term appointment while disruptive is better for the voters than either having a long-term appointment or causing a special election. So I would propose removing that item from these recommendations. And I think Liz, you had shared that the commission wasn't strong one way or the other either, that you would have a similar debate.
That's correct. And I had similar concerns about the lower voter participation in a special election. So I will speak for myself, but in the commission's discussion of the topic, there weren't incredibly strong feelings about that needing to change. I think Eric Covey was probably the strongest advocate for it and he's not on the call. He's just moved and isn't able to participate. But I don't know, Prashant or Hussein or Sam or Doug or Alex, do you have anything further to add? But I'm, I think there was debate and not hugely strong feelings about it.
Yes, so Liz, I don't have like any more update on that. But like me and Christine, we, we met with some, some new Americans on like last week and we discussed with them also. So I think Christine can say more on that, but I don't have much update on this.
You can say more on the question about the language of the mayor, candidates for mayor having to resign or just more generally in reference to all resident voting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking in general for everything.
Okay. Well, I don't want to derail you, Mayor La, from the specific language you were asking about, if others have thoughts on it.
It seems like it, there's not an ideal situation either way, right? Like you're either having a special election or someone's vacating their seat early and then you have to fill that. So I'm fine with the mayor's suggestion of, of not making this charter change.
Hal, I see your hand.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Amy. I, I really, you know, think that when we went through this before, it was, it felt seamless. Maybe not in your case as you risked not being on the council, but it all worked out. So I support it being removed.
Jim?
I'll just support that sentiment as well. I'm happy to go in that direction for this and removing it.
Nice. I think, are there any other specific items in here that anyone wants to address besides the all resident voting piece? Or should we just focus on that for the remainder here? Jim?
I guess I just wanted to speak in support of the self-governance component. Since if we're going to move on to all resident, I do think this is an important piece that we should be taking advantage of. And I think we should be trying to find ways that we in the community can take advantage of what people are experimenting with in other parts of the state and bringing that in here when it's appropriate. Again, it goes through the same kind of approval, it just skips a legislative step. And I think we should be trying to achieve these self-governance options when we can. So I just want to speak in support of that particular change since that could be its own ballot item.
Thanks, Jim. Hal?
I strongly support that because it's, it can only make our governance at the state level more efficient. We spend far too much time on nitty-gritty things and, you know, this, this, the power of precedent. If it works for one, why can't it work for all? So I, I support it.
And I just want to publicly state that that language comes from VLCT. It's well-vetted and other, potentially other communities could be adopting that as well. So returning to all resident vote and to Prashant's point, I do want to highlight that Prashant, Jim, myself, across these several meetings, spoke with about 50 members of our new American communities, both non-citizens and citizens. And there was strong support all around for this with the, the one concern about impact on, on future citizenship application, which we were just discussing. I, I also want to, you know, at our last meeting, we were talking about outreach and have we done enough outreach? Because we haven't had in-person meetings, we haven't been like tabling at events or having community dinners as we have in the past. I was revisiting the report from our Charter Commission and just wanted to highlight some information from there. So they distributed 400 fact sheets at Town Meeting Day last year. Just had, I think you just said 11 people at that weekend meeting. We talked to 50 people over the last several weekends, 27 contact, contact form submissions, 57 tracked views of their Channel 17 Q and A on YouTube. That QA is also hosted on the city website and Channel 17. There's no public, I can't see views tracked on those formats, so there could be more. Information survey was sent to Wunuski Housing Authority. There was a meeting with folks from Our Lady of Providence and with the Peace Initiative in Wunuski. I just saw an update on this in the Partnership for Prevention News. And it has come up in multiple Charter Commission meetings and city council meetings and Front Page Forum and been in the school newsletter over the past two years. So I do want to, I think that there has been more outreach than it feels like, it's just maybe been different than we're used to. Hal, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I just want to just give some context to this conversation. It was about a year and a half ago, while on the city council, I heard very strongly from community members that we needed to slow the process down. Because we, as the city council, were out in front of the community on the issue. And we did. We, we, we bumped it out a year. We stood up a commission to, to, to look at the charter change process. And given our constraints with this pandemic, I think the commission has done an amazing job. And I want to thank Liz for her leadership and all the commissioners and the alternates for showing up and participating as best they could. And, you know, in my experience in this kind of process, whether it's a commission, a committee, a work group or whatever, that rolls up their sleeves and does the work, I think it's really incumbent on a council to respect that work. And I think it's good work, you know? And if there was something egregious or really out of line, yeah, then we should interrupt it and say, you know what? This is not good enough. But I don't feel that way. And I, I, I strongly support the recommendation, including our, our, our most recent amendment. But I think it's good work. And I think it's time to let the people decide and stop kicking the can down the road. We've been doing this for years. It's ridiculous. Like, let's get on with it. Let's hear from the people. And, and what could be a more opportune time than everyone getting mailed a ballot? I mean, that to me would be, whatever the decision is by our community, it, it'll have the most impact in the legislative process, which has to weigh in on deciding whether or not this is to be put into law. So I think the time has come for us to decide, yes, let's move, let's move this forward and put it on our November ballot. And I'll say one last thing. I know there's always this constitutionality issue. There's no issue. Because the legislature has the purview to decide policy on local elections. That's in our state constitution. So the legislature has that power. It has nothing to do with our national constitution. So that's, that's a rumor, that's fake news, whatever you call it, it's, it's just not true. So, you know, we, we are clear to move forward. I think let the citizens decide, the voters decide, and let the legislature decide. Thanks.
Thanks. Amy, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. Hal, I wanted to say thank you for some of the context that you just provided. I, you know, the conversation about the public asking us to slow down the process was before my time on council. So that's actually really helpful context to hear. And I do agree that standing up a charter and having a lot of these meetings was a good way to slow it down and really look through this process. I was one of the folks at the last meeting that felt like we had not had enough outreach. And, you know, I, I think it was helpful to hear from Christine, your recap just now, and also kind of going back and looking at old agendas like I, I had done as well. And just kind of seeing that all of these things had occurred. They were just spaced out in a way that wasn't as, you know, packaged up as we were probably used to seeing. I fully was prepared to come into the meeting tonight to say that I was uncomfortable that we didn't have, you know, public hearings set. And the fact that a, that on, you know, one of the, the sheets that is on our agenda to see that there are two public hearings that are being proposed for the future, it makes me feel a lot more comfortable about moving forward on this topic because not having public hearings was really what I was getting caught up on. Because to me, it seems like you should have a public hearing before, before you move on something, move on a decision like this. But I don't want, I don't want that to get in the way of us missing this opportunity. Because I think like Hal and like Jim had said at the last meeting, there is a real opportunity right now to get it on the November ballot. You know, there's going to be probably more voters than ever. The fact that it is a general election, there's going to be more voters than ever before. So I would support moving forward with this tonight. And I am very glad to see that there is a concrete schedule and about more public hearings coming up. And I would also, if the, you know, Charter Commission is able to, I would just encourage you to keep promoting that YouTube Q and A. And if you have capacity, I know you've done so much already, but if there is capacity to do more in-person socially-distanced meetings, I think that that would only help the cause.
Is there any public comments?
Hi, Mayor La. So we have Mohamed Jafar with us. Mohamed, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk right here.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name's Mohamed Jafar and I am actually a new resident of Wunuski. I've lived here for about eight months. And I'm calling in support of the all resident voting initiative that, or the charter change rather, that we are proposing to bring to the table for voters. For me, I think the, the support is, for me, is pretty obvious. The way I see it, in terms of domestic policy and strengthening domestic policy, it's a huge pro and I, to me, it's the pro that often gets lost in the conversation. The way I see it, if a government is the institution that is charged with creating the best livable environment, the people that live in that space should definitely have a say in how well that is being done. And I feel like there is a dysfunctional, kind of a dysfunction that's created when, when that isn't happening and the folks that are at the table aren't necessarily making decisions that, that are, are reaching everyone and that do encompass and bring in everyone's voice. So I, I wanted to echo much of what everyone else has already said and how I appreciate some of that context that you added as well. And just some of the background information and background research that was done to make sure that we are taking, we would be taking the proper avenues and, and protecting our, our residents as well. Of course, as can be seen with certain things that are going on right now, it can be very easy to exploit some of these things. So I appreciate hearing that there is a little bit of that security in terms of understanding and, and, and making sure that we are meeting the standards that we need to meet with the constitutionality piece and, and all of that. So again, yeah, just in support and looking forward to hopefully voting for this. Again, glad to be in Wunuski, I've lived in Burlington for 17 years. So I'm glad to be out here, it's a little bit quieter. Thank you.
Welcome to Wunuski and thank you. Other public comment? Christine, Jesse?
Just to draw people's attention to the chat, Sam Russo, who you heard from earlier, also put a comment in the chat. If you don't mind me reading it, just so it's officially in the record. I appreciate and agree with, so Sam Russo is saying, I appreciate and agree with Counselor Colston had to say about putting this to the public vote, given the amount of time and work that has already been put into this topic. Just wanted to get that on the recorded record. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think to your point, Amy, you know, you, Jim and Mike were not here when these conversations started. So I'm glad that, that Hal highlighted that. I will also just say when I was going door to door running for mayor a year and a half ago, uh, it, this was on a lot of people's radar, whether for or against. It, it came up more than I expected it to. And I, I suspect that even more people are aware than at the point. And I, Jim, your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of reinforce that as I've gone. And I've been talking to people in my circles and I say, oh, have you heard about this? We're doing this discussion on all resident voting. And I've, I've not yet gotten a response of what's that or I need more information. It's people have heard about it, they've talked about it, they've looked at what we've already done and what Charter Commission has done and they're aware of it. And that's totally anecdotal, but I've been seeing that over and over reinforced. So I think sometimes I get this worry that because no one's showing up, no one's paying attention. But I also think that this might be a situation where it has been already discussed, embedded in households and community members' living rooms. And the reason people aren't showing up is because they already know, they don't need the Q and A, they don't need the further discussion. There's been this discussion, I think we see this on both sides, that people want to have more discussion, but they aren't changing their minds. And so I think that it is time, as Hal said, and this is said before, like we have an extraordinary opportunity to get a very strong sense of where our community is. And it's going to be better than any public meeting, phone call and program, virtual gathering, remote happy hour, whatever we want to try, is going to not be the same as having a November general election ballot. So I still strongly support this timing and this approach.
Thanks, Liz. I see your hand.
Yeah, I have a question and then just a couple comments. First is a question, and I don't have the ballot language, the latest version that I think Jesse emailed to you all. But in page two of your memo, Jesse, there's a parenthetical phrase that now reads, "Any person, parents, including persons who are non-US citizens, notwithstanding the provisions of the Vermont State," you know, whatever the statute is, "may register to vote in any city meeting or municipal election who, comma, on Election Day." Is, there's more after that, right? Okay. That's.
That's all that was, I just wanted to call it out so that the council knew that was the only change from the previous version that they had obtained. And all that's changed is that parenthetical reference to state statute. All the other language is exactly the same as previous, as the Charter Commission saw.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a typo. And then I will speak on my own behalf that I fully expect to be called on to participate in any public meetings or outreach. And would, you know, welcome either collaborating or, you know, having a set of activities that the Charter Commission continues to work on throughout the fall to continue to educate the voters. And I think there was something else I was going to say, oh. I just wanted to thank my fellow commissioners and I'm really glad Hussein and Prashant have been able to join this call tonight as well. And I feel like our composition of, of our commission represented all sorts of different voices and backgrounds. And we really were able to collaborate, learn from each other and get even stronger work done because of our diversity. And that's what I think is one of the most exciting things to me about all resident voting. When you let more people into the process. When you say your voice matters, that you belong here. And everything that comes with that, I think we will only become a stronger community for it.
Thanks, Liz. And just to clarify this later, the memo does not host the full ballot language. The ballot language is essentially the different articles of the charter with the edits that are being requested, the changes that are being requested. I, I want to say at our last meeting, we discussed, because it has to appear that way, we don't get to put any framing or context on the ballot. We wanted to make sure that people clear that the implication of all resident voting is allowing non-citizens to vote. Obviously with public hearings, additional outreach. Hopefully we can put that framing context in place with some of these things that we've discussed. For instance, the checklist protection, uh, legal protection with citizenship application and the sort of questions that residents would ask. I'm hearing some little consensus. And so I wonder if somebody wants to move to adopt the minutes and documents as discussed by the Charter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hal, second by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
I would, uh, motion carries. I would entertain a motion to approve the ballot language with the removal of section 19206 about changing how a counselor runs for mayor.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. A motion to approve the process and public hearing schedule. So this process would be, we have three different pieces, right? And this public hearing schedule.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. That's it. Those are our votes, right, Jesse?
That's it. Well done, team.
Thank you. The final item on our agenda is an executive session. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Vermont State Statute 313A2 that negotiating or securing of real estate purchase or lease options in a public setting would put the city at a disadvantage.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
So we will be going.
Can I have a motion to enter executive session inviting manager Jesse Baker? And I'm going to guess, city attorney Robert, just city manager?
And John Rousher is going to join us as well.
Oh, all right. And John Rousher. To invite them.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, so we're going to move to a different Zoom line for the executive session. We will discuss only this one item of business. I believe Hal is going to leave this line open because we will come back here into this public space to adjourn.
So we're going to a side room?
Yes, so I, I sent around an email just to the council on Friday afternoon with another Zoom like. So go over to that Zoom.